Work session.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town Board Work Session, January 14th, 2020. We're going to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers. Dr. Martin Luther King has Dr. Martin Luther King Day comes on Monday. And remember his great work for our country. Thank you. Okay, today is the first work session of 2020. As a reminder, there is no public comment unless it is a... Unless it is part of a public hearing, excuse me. And so we have quite the agenda here. We're going to start right away. The first item on the agenda tonight is something new. I was actually called by County Executive Latimer's office and asked what Yorktown does to recognize Dr. King at the holiday on Monday. And it really bothered me that I couldn't give him a great answer. And so one of the things I wanted to bring to the board and propose is our first annual Dr. Martin Luther King Essay Contest, something that I think the town can sponsor, something that I think would be geared towards fourth and fifth graders. And I think it's a great way to engage the youth of our community as well as promote and educate people on the message of Dr. King.
Sounds good.
For discussion.
What were you thinking of as an essay contest through the schools?
Well, I think what, obviously partnering with the schools is going to be one of the primary avenues for us to explore. You know, I think also just publicly on our Facebook page, website, you know, I think what we're going to do is really have it be about, you know, Dr. King's vision for the country and how that relates to Yorktown and what their dreams and vision are for our community. Maximum of 250 words, so basically the size of a letter to the editor. You know, again, fourth and fifth graders, I think the Town Board can serve as judges.
Any type of prize?
So for the winners, I think we do one male, one female from each grade. My thoughts are to see if our friends in the local newspaper can publish their essays. We can display it here at Town Hall. I would also ask the library to display it as well. And I'd also extend an invitation for them to come in and read their essays as part of one of our Town Board meetings.
Nice.
Yeah, that'd be good. I think it's a great idea.
But so the, everything has to be set up through the school, you know, because they know that children who are interested and, you know, they can participate as many as they want.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can partner not just with our public schools, but I know I had the principal of St. Pat's in here in my office as well today, and she was very excited about the prospect of it. And so I think it's something that would be a nice thing for the community to do. And like I said, just honor Dr. King and his memory and legacy and also make sure that our youth recognize all he did for the country. So I think that's something that maybe we can, and I looked at the town attorney, we can memorialize with a resolution next week as well as a resolution for Dr. King. Again, MLK Day is this coming Monday, so I thought it was important for us to invest some time and energy and remember someone who did something so great for our country.
Very good.
Good?
Yep.
Perfect. Moving along on the work session agenda then, we have our, we have the winery at St. George. I believe former supervisor Mike Brace.
Gentlemen, will you do this at the podium now?
No, you could, you can.
Come on up if you'd like.
Grab a couple of chairs.
Mr. Taggert, do you want to come up too? We just like seeing you up here, Johnny.
Hey, John, how are you doing?
Are you a brother?
Hello, John.
Lost the mustache. I'm very disappointed.
Better low already.
Thank you.
Are you with your brother, right? Your brother, your brother?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we're here because we're looking to have a wine.
Well, you'd probably be looking to have that after this.
Going to the right place.
We don't want a wine, we want a sign approved for the winery. Most of you, I gave you a little bit of a submission. As most of you do know, that the winery is one of the only, one of two sites, I think, in the town that is own transitional, which basically is a unique zoning designation that allows for site plan, customized site plan that's approved by the Town Board. And that was done, I don't know, quite a while ago. Anyhow, so the, at that time, I think it was done eight years ago, at that time, a sign was not part of the original site plan. And to make an application for a sign permit downstairs, you usually go back to the site plan to comport with whatever the requirements were at the site plan. But since this is a special zone, it's customized, the signage is basically discretionary with this board. The, the, I gave you a copy of what the signs look like. I imagine you have comments on that. I don't know, John, if you have any. We'll certainly welcome any, any comments you have on that as to the design, if you wish to refer to Abaca. We have no issue with that. We just, we'd like to do it in a certain urgency in getting it done. And the only other thing that is of concern is the location of the sign. And I apologize because I gave you an eight and a half by 11 sheet of the old site plan, which would be very difficult to see where the sign is on it. So I've got a bigger version of the site plan. And we're looking to put it by the patio. So there's an exterior walkway and a patio, so which is outside of the main front doors that face Route 6. And the reason that location is picked, because it's the only one that really is visible going east and west. And it doesn't make sense to put it anywhere else based upon the rest of the site development. The issue also is, is that the New York State DOT right-of-way actually runs beyond on the, on the winery side of that stone wall, although a stone wall is a, you know, physical barrier to Route 6. So it's going to be in a setback that would normally not be allowed. Well, I shouldn't say normally not be allowed, would be beyond, you know, it's less than what the code would require in most commercial districts. But again, this is a transitional zone. And the whole idea behind having done a transitional zone was to preserve this structure as, you know, everybody that has been there knows how gorgeous and beautiful it is. Anybody that hasn't been there, they should go there now, especially since it's now going to be a restaurant, then it's a full liquor bar as well as a wine, winery, so in great entertainment. I think they have a PF tomorrow night, Led Zeppelin?
Yep, Led Zeppelin tomorrow night. Tribute.
Coming in person.
There you go.
Not for 35 bucks, you're not getting the real Led Zeppelin.
Adam, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I didn't misunderstand. Are you saying that you're within the NICE that right-of-way or at least their interpretation of the right-of-way?
We're, we're in, on the property proper. So we're not in the right-of-way. But normally a sign would be setback. I think it's probably, John made a five feet. Yeah, I think it's five. And I think this is four and change. And.
So you don't need NICE that approval?
The, no, 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 that's a local regulation over. So what happens in a situation like this, and again, I mean, this is always something that we come across is that, you know, we would normally, if it was not a transitional zone, would be for the planning board. And the planning board would say, you need a variance, go to ZVA and get a sign permit and a variance with the ZVA. But this is a transitional zone, so it's jurisdictional with you. There's no other board that has jurisdiction over it. Everybody's advisory to you, so it is totally within your jurisdiction.
So the entire parcel, the applicant is outside NICE that's right-of-way?
Yeah, everything's outside of the right-of-way. And what happened, just so you understand, a transitional zone was a, it's a zoning designation that a parcel qualifies for that doesn't necessarily fit into any of the categories that exist under the code and usually is separated by the major thoroughfare or lies between two zoning districts. And either budding zoning district doesn't allow for the, you know, and so this was zoned residential with the old church on it. So that's why we went through this whole thing about doing transitional. John, what thoughts?
I think Abaca's a good idea. They'll help you with the design and so forth. It looks like a nice design. I think it's in keeping with our sign manual that we produced a while, but Abaca has that well in hand, so I think that's a good idea. As far as its placement, I agree with Mike that this is a zone that you control. And I think that you can set those parameters within your review, so.
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you, you know, being very familiar with the site, and I think most of you are, if you, if you go to walk it, very little choices.
Right.
It's the sign location. And as big a site as it is and as much profrontage as it does have, it really doesn't lend itself to any other location.
Do you have any lighting on it?
Uplight?
We didn't really plan for that, but.
You have a spotlight there already, don't you?
It's lit up in the front, isn't it?
Pretty much.
The building is, but you're not going to. The sign is not, right.
So my recommendation would be that you put in that if they do go to lighting, that it's uplit from the ground. Because I think that's what's in the recommendation, the sign manual looks better, it's a nicer fit. So if and when they decide to do that, they can go ahead and just.
Yeah, this is, this is like, this is a simulated wood carved sign, so it's not a backlit sign anyhow. Uplighting would be the appropriate thing.
John, when they're going in and out, there is no obstruction to the.
No, it doesn't appear to be from these pictures.
Yeah.
And one of them, in fact, is taken from the driveway and it's looking east and you have ample site distance.
Site distance that way.
And so the other way, you don't have a sign in the way.
Well, yeah, yeah, the problem is you have this nice stone wall at quarter six. Yeah. So you have to get up over, the sign's no good if you don't put it up above the stone wall.
Right.
So, and it really doesn't work anywhere else because of the line of sight. Again, you know, coming in and out, you know, it's, and most people come, and this is a one-way in to the west and one-way out to the east. So it actually makes perfect sense to be at that location. And then, you know, the other issue is, you know, so it doesn't make sense to put it on the parking lot to the east as well.
No, I agree.
Because then it's too far from the building and all sorts of other issues. And then the other ones are occupied by parking spaces and.
To your point, it's tricky. Yeah, to your point, it's a tricky place for a sign.
And the only thing, again, we've got no problem with going to Abaca because I think that's constructive for everybody. We'll try to get on their agenda as quick as possible.
Right.
We're trying to do this as quick as possible. I don't, it's kind of an odd thing, but it's not a, when we get to the actual making the application, the building department for, what you're going to do would be approve it, but I don't think it would qualify as an amended site plan because we had the provision in the code, if you don't increase the exterior building by a certain amount, that affect the parking, it's really not an amended site plan because that triggers all sorts of other fees just for the sign, which we don't want to, I don't think would be proper. But I think there's a provision in that we did that for the.
Obviously, we'll check.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that for the windmill.
Yeah.
Property when he was bumping out the bathroom. And it technically became an amended site plan to bump out the building. And we were like, wait a second, we're not going to do this because that was just more, fee was more, cost more than the bathroom.
Right.
But I know there's a provision in the code that provides for, especially where there is no change in the physical, so I think it's just, and I don't even, I don't think it would necessarily, it's so mild that you don't need a public hearing for an amended site plan or any of that.
I think what we do is refer to Abaca.
Abaca, yep.
And we'll have, John, if you wouldn't mind checking the code just to make sure that it's accurate.
Sure.
And we'll hopefully on the next Abaca agenda, we see this and we get this thing done right back to us.
When is the?
I think next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Councilman Patel?
Yes, the drunk guys, you no problem going in and out?
No.
Yeah. Nancy will get you.
I think it looks nice.
Do we, we don't need a motion, do we, for a referral?
No, we just referred out.
A motion to refer to.
Motion to refer out to Abaca and.
And if you can, if you can make a motion to bring it back in front of you on weeks from now, it'll be.
When did you say their next meeting was?
Next Tuesday.
Is next Tuesday. So can we ensure that this is on their agenda?
Sure.
And then we'll hopefully be back in two weeks.
Okay.
Motion removed.
Seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a pleasant evening.
All right.
You too.
Will we leave the chairs here?
Yeah, you might as well leave them. Okay. Next on the agenda is our, we're going to be revisiting the battery storage legislation. And Mr. Taggert? I think you have some, we're doing great, thank you. Think you have some discussion points for us to look at? And if you want to maybe provide us just a brief overview of where, where we currently are?
Just tell us the change first.
Well, okay, there's no change yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So what is currently on the website is, I believe, draft four is what is still in front of you and how you left it. I think that you had public comment. And adjourned the public hearing, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And so you're now going to, I guess, revisit this and start wading through some of the issues that were brought up during the public comment period?
We do have a moratorium in place.
You do have a moratorium in place that restricts any of these from going into being installed or approved.
Correct.
At present, so. And my recollection, although I did not comb through every comment, I think the majority or the kind of the larger ones that I think were voiced by many people was related to their ability to locate them in residential zones.
Yeah, right.
And the concern was, I believe, mostly visual impacts pursuant to that. So I've offered some ideas that you can talk about in terms of what you can do to sort of address those comments. Of course, I think the biggest concern is with what is termed a tier three installation, which is the larger ones, which would take up and require much more infrastructure and obviously would make themselves more visible possibly to surrounding neighbors and the street. Obviously, you can ban them from residential zones altogether. You could restrict them to certain zones. So for instance, you could restrict them to the residential two-acre zone and the residential four-acre zone, for instance. What that would do is guarantee that they get onto, into an area that is typically larger lots, but they wouldn't be able to be in an area that is typically smaller lots, but may actually have larger lots in them. And that would probably remove them from large areas of town. You could write the law so that they are restricted to a minimum of a lot size. So instead of specifying a particular zone, it could be a particular lot size. So the minimum, for instance, could be, say, two acres or four acres or whatever, once you consider it, figure is the best threshold, that would allow them in all residential zones, for instance. But it would be required that they have enough land to work with the impacts that they impose. Other things that you can do is strengthen the law in terms of the screening requirements. So you could make some very strict requirements in terms of screening, that they are permanently for all four seasons screened from any view from neighbors or the street. You can also, I think that you may recall that we've had a couple of, I'm going to use solar panel installations as an example. We've had a couple of inquiries on two properties. One was on a hillside, one was not on a hillside. And the one on the hillside would be obviously more difficult to screen appropriately, and you could see it from further away, possibly from a park. So you could put restrictions in there that would prohibit them from steep slopes or prohibit them from parks when they abut or are visible from parkland, things of that nature.
How would you determine, you know, when you say visible, visible from parkland or in relation to parkland, how would you determine that?
The height, right?
Yeah, if it's, if it's on a hillside and there's parkland, you know, that is kind of facing from another hillside, that would be very difficult to screen because as you go up the hill, it'd be more difficult to get something high enough to screen it. So you'll be able to tell that from typical visual impact analyses. You just draw straight lines where somebody might be standing across the road or the valley and see what they can see. And you should be able to determine that you would need such of a height of a tree to, to screen it or that no tree that is available in this, in, you know, that would grow here could actually do the job. And in that case, it would be a prohibited use.
John, just one question. Sunday I was over by PJ's and I happened to notice the Tesla unit that was put there. How common is the look of those compared to that unit? Now, that appears to be a relatively small.
Yeah.
Insignificant amount of space that it takes up. Now, is that just for the charging stations for the cars? Do you know or?
It's not just for the charging stations. It's kind of related. It's also, they also have solar panels on the roof. So they're all kind of related together, but not one in particular. It is behind-the-meter installation, so might be typically a little bit smaller than you would see if you remember the one that's up near Gomer Street, which is in front of the meter and will be selling right to the grid. This one is for the benefit of that landowner. So A, it's probably a little smaller than you might expect. And I think that the design of the cabinet is probably a little sleeker and not as obtrusive as some of the ones that you may get that are larger. They'll typically end up in a cabinet that resembles to a certain degree a.
Shipping container.
Shipping container.
Okay, because I looked at that the other day and I said, geez, that's really not terrible, but, you know, that was small in size.
Right. Plus, it's already on a.
Commercial.
Commercial area in the back in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And the area is fairly well screened from its neighbors already.
Yeah.
Little bit different.
Yeah, I don't think that was the issue. I think the biggest issue that we heard during the public hearing was, was tier three and residential zones.
Right.
That was, that was, I think, the.
Yes.
Biggest piece of opposition that we need to deal with in order to get this done.
Yes.
So that's what, we're trying to look at different options so we can, in a sense, thread the needle, so to say, on this, so we can, we can have a nice balance in the legislation itself.
Tier three would be the size of the larger one, like the shipping container, correct?
Correct. Over 600 kilowatts per hour. The one in, the Tesla one in Staples is over that, but it's obviously a smaller situation than the one on Gomer Street or the one that, the type that you could get that would be in front of the meter.
Yeah.
So the bigger they are, the more cost effective they are, obviously. You know that drill.
Yeah.
I think it bears noting that in the residential zones today, there are many uses available to landowners, some of which you would expect, that you may not expect to see. However, if you think about it, A, they are in there and B, they make quite a bit of sense. For instance, utility lines and substations are allowed, telephone exchange buildings, telecommunications towers, which would include radio towers and cell towers, all available and exist and are similar types of uses as what we're talking about here. The reason that they are allowed there is because it benefits the neighborhoods that they're in. These battery units and solar, solar installations will provide electricity to the, generally the consumers in the, in the close area. So they don't, the electricity doesn't travel very far. When the demand is there in the area, it'll be pulling that additional electricity from that general area. So in my view, you have to think carefully about whether or not you are prohibiting them in large areas of town because then those folks may not be beneficiaries of this kind of technology that will help us with some of the outages and brownouts that we've seen in the last number of years, which I think have been quite a problem, so.
And, and you know, if you have too many like these, then they interfere each neighborhood, you know, they have their own generator and somebody don't have any, want to give it to them in this area. All these things are future, you know, the problem. Even when you sell the house, you know, is it going to come with the house or, you know?
Correct. So.
Thoughts?
You know, I already see the benefit in solar, have it on my house, as you do now too. Been talking about it for four years, trying to get it on the town buildings. The next, the next step in all of the solar is the battery storage. We need to be prepared. I think that there's a pretty good balance here. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much in favor, just trying to get it, get that balance worked out the right way.
Right.
It's just you don't want them putting it on a half-acre lot, so to speak, you know, somebody's backyard. That's, that's the, I think, the main concern of most of the people. You know, like you say, if it's two acres and above, et cetera, et cetera, maybe that would be it. And it's got to be in proximity to power lines and so on and so forth. Am I correct on that assumption?
It has to be, it has to be in proximity of certain power lines, not all of them.
Right.
So you need a certain phase, phases of electricity there, like phase three, you know, that's out of my realm of knowledge, but.
Right.
Yeah, it needs to be located in certain areas or will not work in certain areas.
So the particular one that I was, that I saw down in back of Staples there, that's, that's actually fed from those solar panels, from what I understand? Is that what?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
And that's what charges them?
That's what charges them, yes.
And then it will feed back in in case of a brownout into the facilities there?
Yes. It'll, it'll feed back into, so the solar panels and the battery will work to provide electricity to that facility. And also when, when there is, on a sunny day, for instance, and they have excess electricity, that will be sold back to the grid. And so that lessens that landowner's electricity bill. Same thing with the battery storage. On days that their demand is high out there and they have enough electricity, that, some of that will go up back into the grid. The charging stations for Teslas obviously pull a lot of electricity, so this kind of hedges that bet a little bit because they will be producing some of the larger demand at certain times. So that's how they, what kind of work together, those three. Not dependent one on the other, but interconnected, I would say.
Is there any, you know, like a small homeowner, one acre or something, and then the large one, they produce homeowner for themselves and then they access the continuous, they sell it? Is there any interference between the commercial guy selling to the, you know, the supplier and then individual homeowner else with the supplier?
No, there's no interference between the two.
Yeah, because then, you know, then the, the commercial guy pays his own cost, but some time of, is there any restrictions that, you know, you are only providing all the time with the commercial only and not using, you know, give it to your own people, you know? I mean, who controls that selling part of the, you know, produce electricity, you know?
On a, for like a homeowner behind-the-meter situation?
Yeah, behind-the-meter.
Yeah.
Because there is a problem, you know? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what you mean by control. I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, but you know, excess electricity is always, you know, you're putting in and they can sell whatever they want.
The excess electricity is going to go into the grid when it's coming from a homeowner or even this situation.
One of the things that I know, Vishnu, is they, they try to limit the amount of solar panels you could put up on your home to, I want to say, account, they try to make it no more than 103%, somewhere around there. So it's minimal, and that's at full production. So there are times that you have cloudy weather where you don't get the full production, you don't get that. So given on a, what they do is they look at your usage and try to gauge it towards that so there's not much to sell back as their way of controlling that. So it's sort of controlled in the regulations on how much you could put up on your roof.
I also think that in terms of the battery storage, the ones that are in front of the meter, such as we have seen on Gomer Street, and I think. the meter, such as we have seen on Gomer Street, and I think to a certain extent, the ones that will be smaller on homes, will be controlled to a certain extent by the utilities. So in this case, Con Ed. Con Ed will not give permits to thousands of these because there will be too much electricity going into the grid. It will become, you know, deleterious to the infrastructure. So they will limit the amount of these that actually happen. Right now, in our area, they are looking for them to happen because we have some difficulty providing an appropriate amount of electricity in this area. That's why you're seeing them because they have sweetened the pot a little bit for some of the applicants. So, they're not going to happen, they're not going to happen on every vacant piece of property in town that, you know, that's two acres and above, just not going to happen.
Right.
How about the schools and all that? I mean, even our vaults, they can put it in, you know, and then we can use it ourselves. There is not much cost involved in installations.
Correct.
So can you work with the town attorney on amendments?
Sure.
Do you think that we could plan on seeing some amendments in time for our next work session or, yeah?
I can't say that you'll be in local law format.
Right.
But we can certainly produce sections of this in like a red line situation that show you the possibilities and maybe even some choices, you know, two acre, four acre, you know, those kinds of things.
I think, I think-
You know, working stuff.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, just to give him a little bit more direction, I think the two acre, I think we're all, what are your feelings on the two versus four acre?
Minimum of two acre, I think, is a must.
And it depends on what kind of land they have. If you need wetland and you just can't go in there, you know, how much is available land to be able to install those things?
Of course, of course.
And then do they make only one layer or double layer?
Yeah, the minimum of two acres, I think, would be the absolute.
Stack them. I believe they can stack.
Yeah. I mean, you know, John, I think you absolutely provide a menu if that, if that works for you. Councilman Patel, two or four, do you have a preference?
You know, I mean, four is more appropriate, you know, than a two acre, but if somebody want to build in your own house, you can do it.
Right.
Yeah.
I would also like to see just language in there about a screening mandate, obviously, in residential zoning. And of course, language dealing with slopes and also the parkland issue that was, that you had mentioned earlier. I think having all that in there, I think gives us a good start in, for, from an amendment standpoint.
John, the biggest one right now we have in the town is on Ellington Road, right? The school over there? Do you know, have you?
That's solar panels.
Yeah, solar panel, but they use it on themselves and someday they can put in more and sell it too, you know?
They have battery storage there, don't they, on Ellington Road?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Solar there?
Unless they did a smaller installation that only required a building permit at some point, but not that I know of.
I don't believe so.
No, the reason is, you know, you can have a, you can have a two layer, you know. There's only one there, they pull another one at a different angle, you know?
When they did that unit, you did not really pass the advanced battery storage that was needed?
Right, right, right. I know that there had been talk about that during that point in time when they were doing it.
No, 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 it's beautiful, but I don't think they have that technology there.
And I guess they paint them white to reflect the sun, to keep the heat down on them?
Probably.
You know, and, you know, that was the other thing, to paint them a more neutral color that would blend into the surrounding areas, like let's say a green or, you know, whatever case might be.
Even the solar cell itself, they put the coating of, you know, some anti-reflecting coating. They have it all the time. They put it in a space shuttle and a car and everywhere else they have it, you know?
Yeah, I think one thing I'd like to do that I, that I will, in these next couple of weeks, I'll try to get a sense of the size required, you know, per unit, let's say. So you have an understanding, how much, a better understanding of how much land you'll actually need to have the room to do what you need to do.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Maybe slightly less than two acres, maybe four acres, I don't know.
Yeah.
But they will come to you in the beginning, so then you guide them.
Sure.
Of course, yeah, because it would need, it would fall to your, in your jurisdiction.
Sure.
Anything further? Adam, anything, Mr. Rodriguez, anything you want to add?
Oh, just one, I'm sorry, Adam, just the one thing. Now, these will change a site plan, such as BJ's, because it's taking up parking spaces, so to speak, in that back parking lot. So does that require a site plan revision?
Yes.
It does, okay.
So, any of this in Tier Three, the way this law is written, will require a site plan review and approval. In the case of-
So you said Tier, specifically Tier Three?
Tier Three. One and two, as written, do not require site plan.
Understood.
In the case of the Staples one, obviously they supplanted a couple of parking spaces. So that put him right into the planning board's hands.
Right.
Because they changed the parking count.
Right. Because I know when we were talking about dumpster enclosures and so forth, a lot, oftentimes that changes a site plan because it's taking up.
If it changes the operation of the site, then it definitely needs to be looked at. Sometimes it's, you know, if it's off somewhere and it's not changing the safety-
Right.
And operational quality, you don't need to look at it with the same concern, but definitely if it does change it, it's a site plan issue.
Okay.
And again, that we would, for Tier Three, it would fall to the planning board for that, for that, for that examination and potential approval.
Yes.
And I was at their meeting last night and have to say, I have a lot of confidence in our planning board, so. But I think this is a good start, something that we can continue to build on.
Definitely.
Anything else anyone wants to add?
If somebody put the new house and the both together, then it goes parallel, the floor and everything, you know?
If they do a new house on a single piece of property and they want to put battery storage in, that's a Tier Three, they'll be in front of the planning board.
Okay.
Under this law. If they just do the house, we won't see them.
Which also would provide another layer of examination and-
Yeah.
And vetting.
Correct.
Which of course is very helpful.
And if you have something like this, you should have that.
Absolutely.
John, who will be the inspector of final safety?
I believe the building department will do that and Ed, the fire inspector, will also probably should be involved and I believe that he would be.
Awesome. Don't go anywhere, John.
I'm going to stay.
You comfortable?
Totally.
Great. Next on the agenda, I think Kyle DeVito is here. We're going to be talking about the Wyandt. This is a technical amendment, nothing to do. Thank you. Now we don't have to share.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, I got you that.
You're the best.
Hey, you look different now.
Do I? Is that good or bad?
Your hair is different.
Yeah, it's still there, isn't it? Still mad.
Why don't you tell us what you're need of and-
So, nothing's changing with the plan itself. No units adding, going away. Basically, where we are, what we're looking for, right now it's zoned as 23 units, a single entity for rents. It's going through the transitional zoning, so there's a little bit of a gray area with it. We want to make sure that in the verbiage of however this gets finalized in the resolution, that we would have the option to rent or sell the individual units. And I think right now it stands as just a single rental property. So I think for us to go forward with the attorney general to go through the condo and HOA process, we just have to have a verbiage change in the resolution. And correct me if I misspeak on that.
No, I think, I think that's correct.
Yeah.
So Kyle, it would be both rental and?
It provides the optionality to do either or. Right now, it's strictly a rental.
Rental.
Yeah.
And you've seen, not to cut you off, councilman, but you've, I believe that you've had some interest from-
We've had a number of people come in for, to buy units.
From our community, specifically in-
Specifically the seniors.
Seniors.
Yeah.
Great.
So it's really just, it's, nothing's changing on the plan, nothing. It's just a, a verbiage issue in the, I guess, your resolution of it.
So that was something that was actually stressed quite a bit by the seniors when we were having the meetings on it, that they don't necessarily want to have the, have a rental. They like ownership when they downsize.
Right.
So, yeah, I think it's great that it's addressing what was, what was brought before you.
I see Jenny Mitten and Tony Grasso here, of course. Jenny on the senior advisory committee, giving her a thumbs up.
So, but you wouldn't limit, like if you had, for argument's sake, 23 people come in and say, we want to buy, they could buy 23 units, basically. Or would you stop at so many?
I think it just provides optionality. I won't tell you that I have a definite answer, yes or no. Right now, our plans always had been to be a rental community.
Right.
We've seen a lot of interest from other things, but it, there's some technical issues that we get kind of pigeonholed in by, by the being zoned specifically as a rental community.
Right.
So it also just provides us the optionality that there is a huge market out there for this too, so.
Ultimately, in order for them to form the HOA, they need approval by the state attorney general in order for the state AG's office to give them that approval. They need the technical amendment on our end.
Right.
So this is just more of a formality. But I do believe the planning board was heavily involved in this process. And so I'm, I would be inclined to have them, just refer to them quickly for a quick peek, just to make sure, unless there's any objection, but councilman Patel?
John, you know what I want to ask you is, if you, right now, is one owner, an individual unit is sold, how is the tax thing changes, you know? I mean, how it is determined, you know, that each unit pay how much, you know, because there may be some-
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how, well, let me put it this way. It's going to be taxed probably at the rate that condos are, which is less than this fee simple, because they will, it will probably be a condo association. So if they do go to sales, I believe that they will all be owned individually. So for instance, possibly the DeVito company may own 13 of them and they sell individually to 10, but they will all be under individual ownership at that point. I think that's how it would work, if they create a homeowners' association.
Yeah, I believe that's how that would work.
Right. So they would own the majority of them. They would be the majority in the homeowners' association and they would rent out the 13 while 10 other folks would own them outright individually.
Well, like, you know, one is a commercial, one is a, you know, private residential, you know. So is there any change in tax assessments or anything?
I think there is. I don't, you'd have to ask the successor. I don't know how exactly that is calculated.
One time I went to the meeting someplace and I don't know how he explained to me, but I couldn't digest it because I haven't got anything to compare to, you know?
I know when it's a single rental community, because we had, we had a discussion on this, was that it's viewed as a corporation and it's based off the rent roll and the tax structure. I don't know how it would change as far as if it's individual units.
And as far as maintenance and upkeep and so forth, that would be under the HOA and a, and a management corporation, like DeVito Management Corporation or wherever the case might be. Okay. So in other words, it wouldn't be under the individual owner if there was an owner there to take care of his-
It would just be like any other condo, yeah.
Yeah, they'll take care of the inside of there.
So then the other thing is, you know, somebody can invest on one condo, just like you are owning it, and then they can sub, rent it, those kind, any restriction like that with the children, something like that, you know? Suppose you have a two unit rented by somebody else and then they, just for them is investment and then they rent it out to somebody else? Is there any restriction like that in your, you know, group over there?
You can't, you can't if it's ownership for subletting. I think you don't-
He's asking if there are any restrictions on subletting. So I buy two of the units-
Right, and then you rent one.
And then I want to rent them myself at the same, I guess, the same price you're renting. I don't think you can do that on a private house. I think we all have the right to rent our house outright.
I don't know, but what kind of-
It would have, that would have to be something, that's not our intention. That would have to be something that would probably have to be in the HOA if the HOA didn't want to do that, but, but our intention wouldn't be to do that.
So the town has no restriction, how to?
The town has no restriction. But speaking to that, when you do this resolution, I think that you should get a look at the restrictions in the papers that create the homeowners' association to make sure that there is no impact on what you approved originally.
Because the individually own, you know, they can change anything they want. They want to make sure they want to maintain it or they let it go, you know, either way. Then it'll affect the value of the entire property.
Well, no, that's what I brought up before, is that there would be a management company that would take care of the entire.
No, I don't, I think you're, actually, you're doing the opposite, in a sense, because you're creating the HOA to manage the property.
Correct. That's, that's my understanding of how most of the condos would work.
Right.
The HOA takes care of anything on the exterior and all that. So the community will take care of the exterior of it and then the individual units are responsible for what's inside their walls.
Exactly. So why don't we refer to the planning board and that also gives us time just to check the, you know, from our standpoint to what you brought up, John. So we're going to, can we get this on the next planning board meeting, which I believe is in two weeks?
Sure.
And it would be, it would just be informational from their standpoint?
Yeah, well, Kyle can come down and explain just what he did and see what the planning board has, if they have any comments. I don't think there'll be too much comment or concern.
Okay.
You know, the, the physical plant, so to speak, is not changing.
Right, there's, there's, there's no physical alterations that are being proposed.
Nothing.
Okay?
Yep. Fair enough. Appreciate it. Hey, great job staying on time tonight, too.
All right.
We're trying. We're trying. Yeah, now you're going to jinx me, you know that, right?
We're ahead of schedule.
Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, Census 2020. John, please stay. Robin Steinberg is going to be joining us from the planning department.
This is like being sent to the principal's office, okay? Stay right here.
They never let me leave.
So, Robin, so why don't you just, if you can, just give us a quick overview, obviously, as another reminder that the census is up this year and some of the activities that the county is promoting and how we're trying to partner with them.
Right, so the county has its own complete count committee and is coming out in force on the 2020 census because of the response of the 2010 census. There were certain areas in the whole county that were very undercounted. There is one area, actually in Yorktown, that was one of the highest undercounted, but it usually, it obviously affects the cities more by percentage, but we're still affected because we get-
Pay some money.
We get, yes. The reimbursement and sales tax percentage is set for the decade, all kinds of grant money, state money. It's all affected by how many people live here, their ages, that stuff. So it's really important that we get all of Yorktown counted.
Right.
So the purpose of the committee is to raise awareness about the census in general, educate the public on the questions they're asking, why they're asking them, why it's okay to answer them. Just get the word out.
Great. I know that we've talked briefly about some public events that we had discussed. I know that, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for giving us a table at the home show to help educate and promote the census coming up. I know that we've had a few people who've raised interest in, in joining the committee, which is great.
Basically, we just want to be visible everywhere.
Right, right. As a point of information, the portion of town that was, I guess, identified as being undercounted was on the north side.
It's considered Jefferson Valley North, north of East Main Street.
Wood Street, Perry, in that area.
Generally, you can give public, you know, some kind of a, say that this is not to just get you what you're doing and what are you, this is good for you us all, you know? That, you know, you're not counting your, so you won't be calling to the court for jury duty or anything else, you know? People are really not aware of all these things. They didn't even want to, don't bother me, you know, it's like that. Well, they don't read it, they don't read it, okay?
So, aside from that paper, the committee can plan information sessions. We've already discussed talking to the seniors, specifically at the senior center, going to different events and being there to answer questions.
Talking about the library.
Yes, the library, which would be, because it's in the Westchester system, which would be one of the help centers to respond to the census online. This is the first census you'll be able to respond online.
And how about the recruiting volunteer or whatever the paid volunteer, how you invite them? Because, you know, it's, some people are really eager to help you. Bring them in right away, you know, and some if you have to push it, we can push it too, you know?
Right.
Some of the students or-
Right. Yeah, we can definitely engage some of our, some of the students. I think that'd be great. And do we have a meeting set for the first, excuse me, a date set for our first meeting? Are we doing a planning meeting first?
Tentatively, we pick the 29th. I've already gotten some issue with that, so we may have to pick another day of the week, but we want to do it by, before the end of the month.
Before the end of the month.
Right.
Okay.
And do you have any information on anybody that would want to be a census taker? Because I know there's some people out there that may decide they-
I, yes. I was actually contacted by someone today at the Census Bureau. They want to come to one of our-
To the first, to the first meeting?
Meeting, yeah.
Great.
Because they are actively want to hire people.
Perfect.
So Robin, I guess it starts April 1st with the opening of the census?
No. Actually, that's just- No, actually, that's just Census Day. You'll get your form in March, probably.
Okay.
Mid-March is when they get sent out. And so first, you'll get the letter with the code to go online. And then you'll get a reminder, and then you'll get a postcard reminder, and then eventually, someone's going to knock on your door.
When do you, when do you have to have your, all your census information in by, do you know the end date of it? When they stop taking it?
I don't remember exactly, I think they're still doing it in May. Was it on that sheet?
Oh, there's something in June and July on that little roadmap. So I didn't know if it went after that, or if that's where it ends.
Goes through July.
It looks like it goes, according to this, it goes through July.
There are many community events, you know, and also in the school, maybe starting some kind of project. Everybody take a car home or something, you know?
Over the summer, you have all the, all the camps that run at the, at the ACCC. You have the Lions concerts out there, some shows that are coming up at the Yorktown stage. So plenty of opportunities to try to get, you know, you could even set up a table with some tablets.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea, in any way that we can help promote the program itself, and obviously the census. You know, we do have a responsibility as a municipality to make sure that everyone's properly counted in partnership with the county. So I do really appreciate your work and leadership on this. So we're going to have our first meeting by the end of the month. And then, from there, we're going to put together a series of events that we're going to be tabling at, weekend events that you had discussed, to help promote the fact that, you know, answer any questions that we have. And also, we talked about training some folks to help assist people with filling out the census, and designating specific times within the library, possibly. We're going to talk to our library director about that, as well as over with the Nutrition Center, with Noreen, and.
The other thing about it being online is that there's going to actually start being preliminary data coming in.
Great.
So we'll be able to.
We'll get a census, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're, absolutely, it's just like every other committee that the town has. So, you know, for those who are interested, you can email Robin, or you can email supervisor@yorktownny.org to let us know. I know there are a few people in the audience who've already expressed their interest about, about participating. So we're, of course, looking for people to help, help in any way they can.
Because this is the money in your pocket from the government, you know?
Yeah.
It is very beneficial to our town, there's no doubt about it, and our county.
The entire state, you know, federal government going money back, you know?
And we, and we can definitely promote the be a census taker and everything that's included in that. It is a, is a paid.
Paid position.
Paid position, so.
And if you speak Spanish or any other language, that's also very helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Good.
CDBG grant funding is based on this data.
That's right. Good. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Mr. Taggart, thank you. Maybe I'll get your last agenda.
Well, this might have to do something with planning, we have Mike Quinn coming, have a seat, John.
Next up. Mr. Quinn, town engineer, providing an update regarding the Halex Mill Sewer District project. Good evening, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening.
Board members.
Hello, Mike.
Do you have a list of the people already for public to see somebody, how many people? Because if a neighbor is missing, you can tell them, you know.
It's 2-8, you needed them back already.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the petition process.
Go ahead, you know, now, okay.
So that's one of the things that we wanted to talk, have you bring an update to the board and.
Correct.
Start talking about next steps.
Okay. Just to reiterate the results of the petition, I know I circulated this to board members, we did post it on our website. In total, we sent out 318 petitions. We received back 225, so the overall response rate was 70%. When we went through the votes, 88% of the votes were yes, and 20, 12% were no. So the way the New York State Comptroller's Office considers a petition to pass, it's based on assessed value. So when we add up the assessed value for the 318 parcels, we add up all of the 225, or 88% of 225, just around 200 were yes votes. When we added up their assessed value, we received 62%, so we're well over the 50% required. And I did review this with our bond counsel, Tom Myers. And so there's two things that need to happen to, to move this forward. The first is just working with the clerk's office to certify the results. I know I was working with Diana on this to get a resolution to the board, basically, you know, certifying that those are the results, and then what I've currently considered unofficial will become official. So I'm assuming that we'll have that for the next meeting. And then the second resolution is essentially the board passing a resolution authorizing the project. And I just want to spend a few minutes on that process, because, I mean, it's easy enough to write that resolution. But in order to write the resolution, we have to plug in a few numbers. And the main one is, you know, how much are we borrowing for the project? And, you know, according to our study documents, this will be a $14.3 million project. We have a $10 million preliminary commitment from Westchester County and New York City DEP. So one of the things is, we really have to get that moving forward. And the, the second part is about the borrowing. So I know I briefed the supervisor and the town attorney on this. We have to meet with the comptroller, essentially, to establish, you know, how much we want to borrow. Obviously, she has to account for that in the tax cap calculations that she does. So there, there's a few, you know, moving parts there that we have to review with her. So those are things that we're actually working on, like behind the scenes right now. But I do hope to come back to the board in the near future to try to, you know, move this thing forward.
Mike, is the county aware of the interest in it at this point? Have they been notified of the results?
They, they have. The county, mainly I'm working with the county planning department. They did send a representative to some of our informational hearings. I've been in regular contact with them. So I think that they're, I mean, they're aware of our results, but we really need to get them geared towards getting this IME, this intermunicipal agreement, so the $10 million that they're currently holding can, can move over to the town ledger side. And, you know, I think that if, what we really want to do was to get that agreement done, confirm what our borrowing is going to be, and get that in that resolution that we're going to pass. I mean, in the simplest terms, we're going to take a $10 million grant, and we're going to borrow $4.3 million, and that's going to be the resolution that we're going to pass. Once we've done that, we can then meet with the EFC, the Environment Facilities Corporation, and see what funding they might make available to us. Having met them a year ago, we know that they'll help us with the financing part. So they definitely want to partake in our bonding. So we can probably save some administrative fees, and maybe get a better rate by working with them, and maybe even a grant opportunity. Their typical grants are 25% match. So if we have a $4 million unfunded part of a project, we can apply for a million dollars. But we really need to get, without those resolutions passed, they, they don't, they will not consider our application right now, so.
Those, those resolutions are contingent upon one thing, though, correct? And that's the county.
Yes, that's correct.
What is the status of the county?
So the county, you know, now that we're ready to move forward, the county has pushed back a little bit. And, you know, they, I really did not work directly with them. The supervisor, prior supervisor, you know, was in regular contact with them. But they, they raised some concerns about the cost for the connections. And if you remember one of my presentations, if you have a gravity sewer, meaning you can just connect with a gravity, you know, four-inch plastic sewer lateral, we're estimating that would be $3,500 to $5,500. And that's typical of a gravity sewer connection. But if you have to put in the pump system, that cost will jump up to, on the order of $15,000. It's an expensive pump assembly that would have to go installed outside of the house. You need electric to it. So when we went through the numbers, and worked with GHD, that has some experience working with these systems in Peach Lake, in North Salem, those are the numbers that we went with. And so the county has expressed concern that that's a pretty significant cost. And, you know.
Mike, when did they first express that concern to the town? Do we know?
Last summer. I mean, this, it's not a new concern, but it was a concern that we were handling in two ways. One is, the county has excess funds available, and they were interested in using some of their funds to help not just Yorktown residents that want to connect to sewer. They have a fund that they make available to people that have to do major repairs on septic, and they were looking to open that up to people that want to connect to a town sewer. And so obviously, Yorktown would benefit by a program like that, but it hasn't been announced yet, and it's just something that's being discussed.
So, but we still, but we still don't know the true number that we need to borrow then, at this point in time?
That's correct.
And the number that was put out for the petition, then, may not be accurate?
Well, if we cannot apply the entire $10 million to the $14.3 million project cost, that, that is correct. We would have to borrow more money.
Like, that forced us to reengage in another petition process?
In that, and the, and if that were to happen, we'd have to do a new petition if the numbers were to change.
And that would be our third petition in how many years?
The initial, technically, it was, it was a solicitation of interest, because we didn't have any of the numbers, and we, that's why we undertook a study with GHD, to kind of get some real numbers that we could go out and actually do a petition. But we have contacted everyone in our study area twice in the last three years.
This would make, if we would, if we had to go out for another petition, not that I'm saying that, that's, and let's be clear, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to get the county to be honest brokers here, because we put a petition out that the cost for the town would be $14 million.
Right.
$10 million from the county, $4 million borrowed.
Right.
But again, if we, if that's not accurate, for whatever reason, from the county's standpoint, then we'd be going out to another petition.
That is true. And just the one caveat there, supervisor, is that when we originally did the petition, we weren't necessarily sure there would be across-the-board interest. So we, we did leave open the possibility. In fact, when we sent out the petition, we said it was number one, because, you know, imagine there was a couple streets that didn't, they weren't interested. We would have had to do a new petition and, and, you know, basically eliminate them. Luckily, everyone is, is, there's very, very strong interest in the project. Everyone, you know, as currently proposed with a 70%, as we proposed, 70% funded project, yeah, there was very, very strong interest across the board. When we looked at where the interest was, it was unified.
My, my, my issue here is that interest was generated with the knowledge of $10 million coming from the county, which we are being pushed back on right now.
We're, we're getting a little bit of pushback on that. I'm not saying that it's over, they haven't given us anything official, but it is something that was brought up, and we need to continue, like, that dialect to bring that to a conclusion. That, that's really what we're doing, to, to try to get this thing done and move forward.
So let me see if I understand this. They want to improve resident septic systems with part of this $10 million, is that right?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
Their, their concern is the cost for, for a hookup if you have to pump.
Oh.
So that's their concern.
So.
Because they, their concern is that you lay, that you're going to invest $10 million, we're going to invest $4 million, you're going to lay the pipe, and people aren't going to hook up because they financially can't.
I can, I cannot imagine how frustrating this is to the people in that area, because I'm frustrated over the fact that we spoke about this last year, and someone brought up the fact that the county's not want to, not going to want to let go of that money. And, and we had asked in those dealings that this was ironed out upfront.
What are our options, and what are, and what are the steps to take?
So, so one, one option, roughly out of the 318 parcels, roughly 100 are on a, are going to be on a pump system. So there's a substantial amount of, I mean, everyone in Sparkle Lake has currently proposed. Now, we always said we're going to do a deeper study to see how many people don't have to be on a pump system. But as currently proposed in our petition, 100, a third of the people will be on a pump system, facing, you know, a $15,000 potential cost. So one suggestion that, that was kicked around with the county is that, you know, we would take a million dollars out of our $10 million, and we would bring that cost down. I mean, if, if it was, you know, $9,000 per, for times 100, that's $900,000. So, you know, that was one suggestion that we kicked around with them.
If that changes our borrowing.
We would now have to borrow 5.3 million instead of 4.3 million dollars.
Does that impact the petition?
It would, because our petition numbers would then change. So we, we, in the petition, said that the borrowing, estimated borrowing would be, payback would be $750 per parcel per year for 30 years.
Now, was this explained to the people that this went out to, that, okay, you may have to have a pump-up system, pressurized system, and, you know, you will have a gravity system?
Yes.
And the ones that, and they understand that?
We did. So we knew that if people would want to know, if they were going to vote yes or no, they would need to know if they were going to be on a gravity or a pump system. So when we looked at who voted yes, with, with just a pump system, again, we see strong, strong interest in them voting yes. But historically, the town doesn't, and I know it was represented, that there's no obligation to connect once the town puts the sewers in the street. The county is worried that we're going to, they're going to give, you know, contribute $10 million towards a $14 million project, and there won't be people connecting to it, like, at least initially. So that, that's, that's a concern that, that we have to, we haven't, we haven't resolved yet with the county.
And so are they, where are we in community, I mean, you and I were at the East Hudson meeting just last week. We met with one of their planners, who raised it with me. But, so where are we in the process with them in trying to get them back on board?
So initially, when this project, when the $10 million was first allocated to Yorktown, it was, it was allocated by a group of towns, the Northern Westchester Watershed Committee, that authorized Yorktown to get the $10, $10 million. That was originally put aside in, in this watershed agreement. We then worked with the DEP to get their blessing on, on our project. So the project that we originally talked to the DEP about was like a $20 million project. And when we tried to do a $20 million project, the numbers were just crazy. So we, we went to this $14.3 million project. So I actually have a meeting with the DEP tomorrow, and we're going to ask them for their reapproval of our sewer project.
Did the DEP approve the $20 million project?
They, they did.
But we never got them to reapprove the $14 million project?
We never did, because.
Before we went out with the petition.
We, we never did, but, again, because we didn't think it was necessary, and because the DEP, it's, they're, they're the ones that put the funds aside. The county administration changed, you know, with, with the Latimer administration. And so all new players came in, and we were executing an IME with the prior administration on that prior project. And.
On the $20 million project?
Yes, correct. So we had an approved term sheet, and we had a draft IME with the prior administration. And then when, when the new administration came in, we had, we have, we have to start over again.
Yeah, but that timeline still doesn't make sense, because the new administration, I don't, I don't want to go backwards.
Okay.
How do we fix it?
I think we, we get the DEP. I've already talked to them, and I believe that they, they like our project very much, and I believe they're going to reapprove our project. We then have to go to the county, and we have to get them to agree on our project. And I'll certainly, you know, would need your help and, and others.
I would make a suggestion that I agree with the county, what they're saying, but to tell us after we did the petition.
That's my frustration.
Right. To tell us after we did the petition is very disingenuous. So if they feel a million dollars should be kicked in towards the, towards the project, then they should up it to $11 million, if they're that, if they're that adamant about it. it.
Then, Mike, we, they want to have another special department, and their individual is really, you know, responsible for sewer project in the county, you know? So do you, have you any thought of communicating with their, Mike Caplowe, you know?
With Mike, yeah.
Yeah, because that will also make it something very clear.
No, I mean, I know he's new in that position that you're describing, and I think that's an excellent idea, but it has not been done yet.
We have all intentions, Councilman, we have all intentions.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I was aware from the very beginning that this is going to happen. So, you know, he has the roots, and we have needs, the people, and this is the first time we have this many people show yes, and that's really very good, you know, for the town. And then we have to bring in.
Honestly, it's not just for, for our town, you know, when you go up to.
No, no, no.
No, no, because, understand, when you go up to the, to these meetings, there's additional monies that aren't being released or refunded until we spend our money. So we're holding up a number of other municipalities on top of that.
But if you don't use it, they're going to take away.
That's correct.
But that's another problem.
It's critically important that we use the money.
Yes.
Because we're holding up another funding opportunity for, for all the towns in Northern Westchester.
All the towns in Northern Westchester. Right. All right, so to recap here, you've, we're, and I believe I'm on the call with DEP.
Yes, correct.
So we're talking to DEP tomorrow, and then where do we go? So once, is the expectation, is the expectation coming out of tomorrow's meeting with DEP to get their approval?
Yes.
And then do you bring that to the county?
So the DEP, we, we sent all the documents to the DEP. They're reviewing it. I thought it would help if we did a little meeting with them to walk them through our project. So that's, that's what tomorrow's meeting is about. So we're hoping in the, you know, next week or so, we'll get their approval on our project. And I mean, again.
Have they, have they provided comments on the project at this point in time?
No, and they provided no comments in the first time when it was a $20 million project.
But they did, but they didn't provide comments, but they provided approval?
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
This is a good for.
Because they, they were, they were, they're approving of our concept. They, they didn't necessarily want all the details. But now we, they, I offered them the details. They said, yeah, send us the details, and we're going to walk them through it.
So DEP approved conceptually of the $20 million project?
Yes.
But not of the detailed $14 million project?
And for the towns that got $10 million, that, that's the same review that they did.
Okay, that's fine. So at least we're still on the same course there.
Yep.
And then our hope is we can, we can use DEP's approval as a wedge to get the county to acquiesce on this $10 million and whatever concerns they have.
I, I, I would like the county to, to give us, if, if they're giving us $10 million and when the last million dollars has conditions on it, I want that, I want then they should write that out, and then we can plan accordingly. So, I mean, right now, our 14.3 is, is a budgeted cost with, with a lot of contingencies in there. So, you know, if we have to do a few maneuvers to satisfy the county's concerns, I don't think that, that kills our project necessarily. I just think we have to review where we stand. And so right now, we haven't been able to get them to commit, yeah, we'll give it to you with these conditions, or we, we won't give it to you at all. They're, they're just saying we're not comfortable with some of the things that you have in your current plan.
But the maneuvering has to stay within the $14.3 million box because otherwise we have to go do another petition.
Or get another million dollar funding.
Or find another million dollars somewhere, right?
Right.
You've got a million bucks, right?
I have printed only one side only, okay? No, I mean, Mike, you know, the really thing is that the biggest thing we have achieved so far is there are people who's wanted, and they are ready to spend their money, and then 10 million is there, and then we have to start from there.
I agree, and I, I think that, you know, my charge is not to wait years to start a project that people voted for, yes, at the end of 2019. So, you know, if we can start a project this year, I want to. And, you know, we're just trying to chase down all of these issues.
We have been really on the top now, on the way up, not too far away.
And I want to be clear, though, we're not, no one's here trying to stop the project. What, what, what we're trying to understand, though, is, is a lot of things that we need to understand about the, about the process that we've undertaken and the petition itself. Bottom line, we need to get the county on board.
Yes.
To release its $10 million. Period ended a conversation. Because to your point, Councilman, and I completely agree, you've got a tremendous amount of support for this project from the people over in the impacted areas. They're willing to spend their money, and they've indicated on the petition they're willing to spend their money. We just, we just need to make sure that we're on the same page with the county.
We don't want to, we don't want to lose $10 million, right?
Right.
Okay, then we are moving forward now.
Very frustrating that this comes out at this, at, at, at the 11th hour, so to speak, that, that, you know, we can't, all of a sudden, there's a, there's now a stumbling block. When we did already do the legwork on, on the other end of it. I mean, the people that want this must realize that a septic system is going to cost them $30,000 odd dollars, let's say, should their septic system fail. So a $15,000 out-of-pocket expense to have a pump up into the, into the sewer line, I'm sure they're taking this into consideration, and I think the county should take that into consideration as well, where, you know, we have a consensus of people here, a census of people that are saying, we want this, we understand.
Yeah, and I, to that point, Tom, we looked at the, so when someone has their septic system pumped out, they have, the, the hauler has to report that to the county.
Right.
So we actually have all that data, and with the help of, of some outsider who helped us manage this huge data set, we know that about 20 to 25% of people that are on septic that are going to need a pump system, they're pumping out, you know, once, twice a year, which is far more than average.
Right.
And so those are signs of, of systems that are not functioning correctly.
Correct.
And, you know, that's a data point that I want to bring back to the county to show them that, you know, this is not somebody that's just going to like never connect to it. There, there's a real need, and I mean, I, people that, that talk to me about this project see that need.
Yeah.
I think the struggle that I always had with the pump systems is that there's a lot of people that are not in this project that already are on sewer that have pump systems.
Mm-hmm.
And some are in the Peak Skill Sewer District, and there's plenty in Hallux Mill. And, you know, the town, as a, as a policy, as, as procedure in the past, you know, didn't buy pump systems.
Right.
And I just think that we, we might be setting a precedent. If we're changing our tune, you know, we ought to be uniform or fair and consistent, is what I like to say, you know, as much as we can.
Yeah.
So I think that, that's something that we'll have to talk about perhaps one day.
Yeah, we don't buy the, the, the other folks have bought their systems for pump up for, into a pressurized system to, to eliminate the waste and, and, yeah, exactly.
So are they entitled now? You know, so we have to really like set some, some boundaries on that?
If anything, though, we could at least help work a deal where, look, there's a possibility of 100 units, what pricing, what price structure can you bring that, bring it down?
Yes.
There's a big difference between I'm going to buy a unit.
Absolutely correct, and we would love, we, we would spearhead that. But I don't want to give up either on an $11 million, you know, grant. Because if the county can, can, you know, go into their excess funds for that million dollars, that would be ideal.
Well, I think, I think that personally, I think to, to avoid the issue is that it needs to be a separate grant for that $1 million.
Oh, I see what you're saying. All, all I care about is that the 14.3 million stays intact. Because I really do not want to go out.
No.
And reengage in another petition.
No, no one wants to.
We have the approval, we have the authority from the people who are being impacted. We should be able to act on that authority. It's just, you know, we just, we've got to get through the next couple of steps here.
Yes.
So it's great that we have the, the approval. You got DE, we got DEP tomorrow.
Yes.
And hopefully, we can come back with an update at the next work session so that we can continue the ball moving.
Right. And then once we get the funding piece worked out, then I would come back with an RFP, which I've already started drafting. I know we may, you know, hopefully, we could get to this right away, but ultimately, we're going to get, want to get an engineer to, to do those plans and specifications, so go out for bids and, and get the ball rolling. So that was like the last step that I had.
When do you expect to get the resolution to the town clerk for her to present us with the resolution?
Well, I thought they were going to do it tonight.
We'll have a work session, we'll have a meeting for next Tuesday.
They have, they have the data.
So we will be, we will be formally accepting the results next Tuesday.
Okay.
And send it to the county together.
Which is a, an important step in this entire process. And then hopefully, you can provide another update the following Tuesday at, at our next work session.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else?
You know, the DEC is so much interested in keeping the water supply for the New York, the entire New York City. So I'm sure there is some way, some money we can flush it out from the state, you know?
Yeah.
We see how many, they are buying a lot of land up there to be able to provide future potable water. You could see all the reports and everything else. So this is really, I think, is a good beginning, you know?
Yeah, I, I hope we can build off this project. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Moving along. Are we still on time? Look at that, we're still early. No pressure to our next visitors here.
Tripa.
We've got our Parks and Recreation Superintendent Jim Moderno.
Just a second.
We have one of our commissioners, Mr. Falcone. How are you?
Evening.
Happy New Year to you.
Yeah, you too, happy new.
Tommy, happy new.
Good year.
All right, and I think you have some other folks. Gentlemen, why don't you come on up, please? Come take a seat.
Tommy Gravich.
And I know you have some other, I see some other Parks Commissioners back here. Do you want to?
No.
They're okay?
Joe's got us on this one.
Yeah, sit right here. Make sure when you speak, though, just you speak into the mic, and you can grab that one right there.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you?
All right.
So, so we're, we're talking about the par three golf course, Shallow, Shallow Creek?
No.
Shallow Creek off of Route 6. I think, I know the Councilman Diane has been itching for a, for an update for quite some time, and I'm glad that you're all here.
Yeah.
It's actually Valley Fields.
Now it's Valley Fields.
Oh, it's Fields now.
Thank you for the correction. Valley Fields. So we're excited to see what, what's coming to Yorktown.
Yeah, it's great. This course is going to be state of the art. It's going to be wonderful. We have handicap accessibility, veterans are going to be able to come there, children of all ages. It's really going to be something special for the town. If you look at the paperwork I handed you guys, we have two phases we're going through right now. One is on the building, and the other is on the golf course itself. Looking at the golf course itself, Arnold Palmer Designs is coming in probably around February to kind of finish what we've already started. The stripping plan has already been executed, and we're moving on to the grading and drainage plan. So that's about to be executed. The first hole is probably going to be the first ready hole, and that'll be ready as, as early as June 1st, and that'll probably be more of a driving range come, come the 1st of June. With that being said, we'll be able to open the building and the facility on that date, June 1st. The existing course, though, will unfortunately have to rest for about a season, maybe the summer, possibly the, the fall, depending on how the grass takes.
Which one growing season?
If we, if we trampled the, the grass seed and everything, the course may not be playable.
Right.
We, we have, have over 100 trees that we're going to be planting to take place of the trees prior. Those trees are going to be Dusia green giant trees, Leyland cypress trees, and an accent of maples, red maples throughout. These trees soak up a lot of the, the wetlands there, which will allow good golf. You know, unfortunately, the trees prior weren't, wasn't doing that, and that's kind of why that golf course fell on the wayside. So I'm very happy with the tree plan, and we also have holly trees as well. So I'm looking forward to, you know, playable golf. If you look at this, this is a kind of a design of where they plan on putting each tree.
How much will be covered with trees, you know, the new trees planted compared to what was before? How many?
How many? So I think about 80 trees were taken out, and we're going to plant over 150?
Over 100, yeah. Plants for over 100 and.
101?
120, 140 so far.
Wow.
Concentrating on American holly and other aquatic plantings also as well.
Great.
You're going to have your conifers, your deciduous trees, but you're going to have the, the aquatic plantings as well.
I'm, I am glad you, that we finally came in with this.
Thank you.
Because this is something that I've wanted to see for, what, six months ago?
We wanted to get it right.
Because I, I know Ed got them, I got them, and probably other board members, we were fielding phone calls on the, the, the amount of trees that were taken down, although we understood why, that it was, you know, going to be a planting, it was, it was taken down for planting, and the pass was given to, I believe you were here the last time for that whole thing?
Yes, I was here.
When I said, you know, within the next month or so, I want to see something, and here it is six, seven months later. I'm glad we finally do have something.
Well, everyone came out to visit me.
Yeah, but we didn't see anything. You know what I'm saying? So I am glad that this is finally, finally coming to fruition. The building looks great, and I did see the, the, the work that's being done out in the field there. But, and, and I'm sure that there's going to be another premier sports facility within the town of Yorktown, such as Granite Knolls and Legacy Field. The, the, the building has, has, has come a long way. That really looks nice. So we're looking for what, a June?
A June, June 1st.
T-off, so to speak, at the.
Yeah. It'll be a soft opening because.
I was getting nervous. Soft, soft.
Soft, soft.
The weather, we've been fortunate with the weather, but, you know, weather is a big, big factor.
Of course.
Yeah, it'll be a soft opening because it will just be a driving range. You won't have the full nine holes.
Is there a pond in the back corner over there? Do you still have that?
Yeah.
I lost a lot of balls back there growing up.
Might have found his ball.
Yeah, no doubt about that.
But it's, the scraping plan, I, I can see where it scraped out there where you have, I guess that's going to be the greens.
Yep.
You see the darker earth and so forth.
We'll, we'll also have an aerator in the stream as well, so you won't have that algae bloom that you've had in just prior.
Like we have at Sparkle Lake, we have the, the aerator, we're going to have something similar to that also there.
Yeah, great.
I got to tell you, these guys are really on point. I was at Hudson Hills Golf Course, I was the point man up there for Westchester County Parks Department, with the Parks Department over 40 years. I was on the county golf course for 27 of those years, and these guys are on point. During the building of Hudson Hills, talk about taking trees down, my gosh. But these guys, to maintain a golf course, you have to have the right stuff to go in there, and he's, they're, they're on point, I got to tell you. Very happy with it.
Joe's been doing a great job overseeing this project, you know, from, from start to finish, so thank you, Joe, and the commissioner.
No problem, my pleasure. It's a great, it's going to be, it's going to be a jewel. Once this is all said and done, let me tell you, it's going to be the talk of the town, believe me.
And where do you get the water in the summer?
He's going to, from the pond there. He's got the pond, isn't he, you know?
All right, another question. Why the golfer carry two pair of shoes? In case if he got a hole in one? Is that a good one?
It's an oldie but a goodie, if you ask me.
Oh, my goodness.
I wouldn't buy me.
With jokes like that, you could grow corn.
No, but I'm so happy to have this course come back, because, you know, anyone you talk to in the community is like, oh, I swung my first club there, and that's where I learned how to play golf, and that will come back to the community, a place to learn the game, understand the game, and go on and play later in life.
That's awesome.
It's multi-generational. It's our senior citizens, of course. It'd be a learning center for the youth, and it's going to be a lot, a lot of activities there once we're...
You mentioned veterans. Is there a veterans discount that you're planning on doing or anything like that, or senior discount?
I'm sure. There'll be a veterans discount, and we're looking to team up with the PGA. They have a HOPE program, which is for disabled veterans, so we're looking to maybe potentially get some grant money through that program.
Excellent.
And have special, special needs vehicles to help them play.
The point of sale system, they'll have a point of sale there, which Jimmy will be monitoring also at his end of it, and like I said, we have Yorktown residents, of course, park pass for residents first, and non-residents, of course, because you're going to get a lot of people around it. And it's going to be a golf course where it's not going to take you six hours to play around the golf.
Right, right.
You're going to be on and off the courts. It's a par three, you know, but it's a little challenging. It's going to be a nice challenge once that's done.
And they specifically love par threes, because, you know, you can play a par three with disabilities, because it's a little bit easier of a course. So the accessibility is going to be important for us.
There's nothing easy about that course. It's going to be very challenging.
See, I thought it was my game. It's good to know that it's the course.
I travel to other states, and I hear about people have weaned on that golf course. It has a lot of notoriety. For sure, for real. You know, one of the biggest golf courses in Westchester County is being called, closed, you know, Doral.
Is there anything you need from the Town Board? Anything we can assist you with? You want to, obviously, listen, it sounds like it's a great project. I'm very excited for it.
Actually, I was looking through here, and I didn't realize that, I guess, a winter ice rink is part of the plan?
The ice rink was delivered to us.
So is that like a regulation size, 60 by 120?
The Premier Financier would like to have an outdoor hockey game played there. But you have the rink that you had that was more like a liner that you flood, weather permitting only. He's looking to do more than that. But you don't want to promise and then not deliver, so.
Right, okay. Is that something that's woefully missing in this area?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
That is definitely something that's in the cards, and they want to keep the recreation going even in the winter, because you have the restaurant open, so.
So when will the plantings will start as soon as the weather breaks in the spring and then...
If I may, once you have the golf course designed in, you want to be able to make sure that the plantings go conducive to safety as well as the environment. So to put it there now doesn't make sense.
No.
And it'll be better than you had even hoped for.
But some of the grass seed is down on that first hole, right?
Yes, there has been perennial triple rye. It's very modern in technique. PJ spends a lot of money. The seed that we're buying actually gets monitored every 30 days by the supplier. It's extensive, you know, we keep advancing in science. It gets a little crazy. I used to just be able to swing a golf club. Now there's a lot more to the shaft, the...
That's right.
Ball launch, the speed rate, you know. I don't even want to know about anything like that anymore. But we will have it all, for sure.
Are there any other concerns that you guys have of anything?
Well, bring the good weather.
You have it well underhand.
I know people are going to say something about the driving range there, but this is a Cayman driving range. You know, the balls are lighter balls. It's almost like a wiffle ball, but it's, you know, it's Rain Lake Golf Course in Yonkers, and it's one of the Springfield Park that has one right there, so.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So this is, you know, it'll be along the first fairway there, which is where it's already framed with trees, but, you know.
So you won't have issues of balls hooking into it?
We were the first to introduce it at Saxon Woods.
Oh, great.
Yeah. It was an outward dimple pattern invented by Jack Nicklaus.
Okay, awesome.
The only thing I'm going to say, if we could contact someone from the state, that road in front, there's a state, I guess, parking, you know.
Yeah, it's a commuter lot, right?
Yeah. It should be resurfaced. It's in terrible shape, and there's a lot of litter. So if manpower exists with the state police, maybe. I know Yorktown Police can monitor it, I believe, if there's like, you know, any... But I mean, I know it's not their job.
Yeah, listen, I'm meeting up with the Regional DOT Director in the next couple of weeks, and I will add that to the agenda for us to discuss, and we'll see how we can...
Maybe they want to help expand our litter cam program.
Or they can, we can pose that to them as well. Happy to. We absolutely have a conversation with them about resurfacing to see what we can do to get that done.
I'd be interested in that, yes, because I'm the one picking it up.
The litter cam, yeah, I know.
I'm tired of it.
No problem. DOT for the commuter lot. Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it.
Same here. Take care.
Good seeing you.
Take care.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Hey, Vish.
Yeah?
I won't. Take care, Jim.
I'll be 11th year, not 10, right?
We still are ahead of schedule.
Welcome. Take care.
Thanks so much. Have a great night. Come on. Good job, Tommy. All right, next up on the agenda, we have the Town Attorney discussing an item that was brought to us at our first Town Board meeting.
I'm sorry. We're trying to schedule.
It's okay. An item that we tash the Town Attorney with that was brought up at the last Town Board meeting in regards to appointments.
Yes, so, you know, I've looked into the issues. I'm prepared to discuss my findings with the board. My suggestion is that we enter into executive session so that I can do that properly, without waiving any attorney client privilege or any other confidentiality issues.
Motion?
Motion to move into executive session.
All in favor?
Are we going to... Are we going to come back in?
Yeah, we'll come back in to do the last item, or do you want to just get it out of the way?
Well, no, I think he wants to brief us and close because of legal. And then we could...
So we'll come back in. We're going to go to executive session. We're going to do executive session, then come back in, and then continue with the rest of the meeting.
On legal?
Legal and personnel. Exactly.
Legal and personnel.
Did you have personnel?
Which were specific people?
No, we're not. That was not the issue that was brought before the Town Attorney. I think that there were specific individuals that were brought to the attention of the Town Attorney that fall under personnel and legal.
No. That's, no. No. We're speaking about the legality of appointments made before the end of the prior appointment.
Oh, so that's the only issue you're talking about, not the type of person who could be appointed.
Correct. When we come back, that might be part of the discussion. So if we could ask everyone to just step out for a couple of minutes? We'd appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you. Those at home, we will be back for more exciting meetings here at New Yorktown.
Okay, motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna reopen to open session. Before we begin, Mr. Rodriguez, can you explain briefly why we went into executive session for the public?
Certainly. Under the open meetings law, executive session was permissible because there were attorney-client communications ongoing to discuss the appointment issue that was raised at the last meeting.
Thank you. So just to take a step back, at the last town board meeting, which was also our first town board meeting, but our last town board meeting, it was raised an issue regarding a potential improper appointment. We had tasked the town attorney with researching that claim. It is of his opinion that the appointment of Diana Quas to the recreation commission was invalid because officials and boards may not make appointments to vacancies that occur past their term of office. So can you please provide some explanation to that effect?
Sure. The general rule is, as you basically stated, officials and boards can't make appointments to vacancies that occur past their terms of office. And effectively, it's meant to prevent sort of lame duck type scenarios from binding their successors without the authority to do so. In Ms. Quas' case, the vacancy arose on January 1st, 2020. But the terms of office of supervisor, past supervisor Gilbert expired on December 31st, 2019.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
Well, you know, it's something where I have an issue with elected officials being on there. Now, that being said, with the appointment not being valid, and I think there may be one or two other appointments that fall into that, even though they were voted on, I think, by a majority of the board that's still here, but maybe those should be looked at as well. I think it gives us an opportunity to have the dialogue, because I would still like to discuss, you know, 28 or 29 percent of our board being elected officials and a 32, I'm sorry, 42 percent being department heads. I think it's contrary to what the Parks and Rec Commission establishment was, whether there's a precedent or not.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, though. So we have two issues that, so you just raise a second. So these are two separate issues.
Yes.
So you have the issue of proper appointment, and then you have the question or issues that you have raised consistently. And Tommy, you raised it as well last year in regards to elected officials serving on our boards and commissions. I do want to make a point, obviously, the seat next to me is empty. Councilwoman Roker is home resting from an injury, but she does want to be part of this conversation. So there's no action that's going to be taken tonight because she wants to be a part of that conversation, and I believe she needs to be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
And I think I said it last week, I think it gives us an opportunity, and I think we really, something I've said before, I think we need to take a look at all of our boards, advisory boards, commissions, and just make sure they're actually performing their duties.
And their charters are...
And make sure that their charters are, if they need to be, again, you know, the charter from the, you said it was, what, 1968 that the charter for the Parks Commission was created?
Sixty-seven or sixty-eight.
So it may make sense for us to take a look at the charter, the charter, again, not just for one, but for all. What's good for the goose is good for the gander, and this could provide us with that opportunity. But again, I just want to make sure we're clear, we're talking about two distinct issues.
Right.
Issue number one is the issue of a specific appointment, and then the issue number two, which is a larger issue that this board really needs to take a hard look at and have a much deeper conversation about, is the role of elected officials on these volunteer boards, commissions, advisory boards, whatever you want to call it.
Well, I think there's actually a third thing to look at, which is part of what Mr. Romanowski had brought up. In some of our commissions and some of our advisory boards, I do not think that the duties are outlined as well as they should be. You know, there's a lot of ambiguity in it, a lot of stuff open for interpretation, which may be part of what's causing some of these issues. And it sort of falls back into my initial area of concern. But, you know, taking a look at all the commissions and all of the different setup of organizational charts and everything involved in it, I think is a necessity.
Yeah, and I think, again, I don't want to get too far out over our skis until Councilwoman Roker participates in the conversation. I wouldn't be opposed to some type of, you know, review committee to help us take a look at all of the... I mean, if you look at the organizational meeting from last week, we had close to 24 different... I mean, if you look at the organizational meeting from last week, we had close to 24 different committees and commissions and that we were appointing liaisons to, so it's no small task to look at it holistically. And that's something I think that is important for us to do. I don't want to look at this as a one-off, a one-specific group. All of our volunteers and all of our volunteer boards play a pivotal role in our community. They play a pivotal role for our town government. And so, you know, but I do think this gives us an opportunity to take a look and just make sure that everyone, that all those governing documents and all those governing directives apply today as they did when they were first created.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Councilman Patel, any input?
I will wait till another, next time when you have an open discussion.
Again, no action tonight?
No, no, yeah, we agree that one, yeah.
This is something that, again, Councilman Lacterman had requested in December when he was away, just to, again, provide that procedural as to how he got here. You requested this?
I requested this while I was away visiting my daughter, because I had specifically asked that we have conversation about these appointments after we did interviews. And it didn't happen, and I did not see it on the agenda because it came out at the very last agenda before the meeting, which, once again, well, from my point of view, I think that was about 1:00 a.m., because I was in England five hours ahead. But the fact that it was added at the last minute, I felt was very disingenuous because, you know what, we had a full week, or actually, I think it was two weeks after the interview, no, a week after the interview. Sorry that we could have had some discussion about that matter and didn't happen, and then it was put on at the very end. And I just was not very happy with that, because I've been raising this concern for, going on four years now. And the fact that we put another elected official on, and it doesn't matter to me what party they're from, I just think that there are some things that can happen looking outward, not looking at the actual people now. But, you know, we've been reminded a lot of times that every decision that we make binds other boards. And I was quite concerned that we did that again without having the discussion. It was not an inclusive discussion process, which...
So just to bring us back in, so we have a few action items. I'm going to ask the town attorney, can you get a list, or maybe more, I think it comes to your office, actually. So we're going to need a list for our next conversation of all of the reappointments and their expirations to see if there are any others that were set to expire on December 31st. That the board, again, once Councilwoman Roker returns, can have another conversation about whether or not we want to, how we want to address those other appointments or reappointments. In addition to that, I think we need to have a greater conversation with Councilwoman Roker's participation on how we want to tackle, again, the macro issue of all of our committees and commissions and advisory boards. And then the final piece, I think, that we need to have another conversation about is the role of elected officials on these boards and what that role is or is not. And that's something that we can continue that conversation. Again, no action is going to be taken tonight. This is the findings that our town attorney has, his opinions and what he provided with us with his research, which we appreciate. And we can continue that conversation, again, once Councilwoman Roker returns.
That's fine, I think.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Councilman, anything additional on this matter?
You know, how we are going to encourage the future volunteer board member? Is there any, you know, somebody is not show up for a certain meeting or one year or like that? Are you going to look anything to appoint them, you know, if there are other people are waiting to be appointed in anybody? I'm just talking in general, you know?
It's a great point. Something to look at, and that's one of the issues we could look at in these.
And that's why it's good to have a comprehensive and holistic review, just to make sure that, again, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. What's good for one is good for all. So we just need to make sure that everyone's using the same set of rules.
Yep.
That's all.
No other comments? Mr. Rodriguez, any additional comments you want to provide on the matter?
No, I'm happy to look into the other issue that you raised.
Okay.
Great. All right. Last item on the agenda is just one resolution to approve conference attendance to the New York State Association of Towns. Be resolved that I, Supervisor Matthew J. Slater, has permission to attend the 2020 New York State Newly Elected Officials Association Annual Conference and Training Meeting to be held in Albany between January 15th through the 17th, which would be Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.